Good evening. It is 5:30 PM on Tuesday, April 19th, 2022. And this regular meeting of the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Chairman John Hastings presiding, also President, our Commissioners' most uncle Forrest Chuck, Amelia Boyd, Luke Ahmet, Ben McRan. Commissioner Slate Camp is absent this evening. And we will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under your individual.
Are there any general announcements from the Commissioners or the city staff? Hearing then will proceed. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes, meeting minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the April 5th, 2022 meeting.
So moved.
Moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed? Motion passes. The final item on the agenda this evening is an update on the Comprehensive Plan. I will now yield the floor to City Planner Amy Twetton.
Thank you, Chairman Hastings and Commissioners. And we are going to talk tonight about much anticipated restart of the Comprehensive Plan. So what I would like to go through tonight is a little bit about where the Comprehensive, whoops. Should be sharing screen. Let's hope we don't have the time.
That's your fantasy world.
Okay, so to start, many of you were involved in the process from the beginning. So I just would like to go through the plan process to date. Some of the previously adopted and in-progress inputs that will be incorporated into the plan. Draft schedule moving forward. And then start with diving into what's been done so far in terms of overview of the planned vision themes that were developed by both the Steering Committee and the Planning and Zoning Commission with input from the public. So again, why are we updating the plan? What is it and why are we updating it? Your Comprehensive Plan is a guiding policy document adopted to guide land use decisions over the next 20 or so years. It establishes a vision for the future along with goals, objectives, and strategies to move the community towards that vision. It's the legal basis for zoning regulations. And the current plan was adopted in 2009 and then amended in 2019 when the airport chapter was added. Really, a comp plan should be regularly reviewed at least every five years and updated. A major update typically happens every 10 years, just to make sure it's incorporating changes to community conditions. So where we were in the process, and you've probably seen this slide many times through all the different presentations. Is there were, there was a lot of committee engagement. There were steering committee meetings and commission meetings to discuss the input received, the existing conditions and trends analysis. And then we got to the pause. So we didn't get to a complete draft of the plan for review and ultimate adoption. But up to that point, there was a lot of public engagement and involvement in the process. These, this is all, this is jumping for some reason. This is all information provided by the consultants, Logan Simpson. So there were five community events, eight online questionnaires, board commission, steering committee meetings. Almost 200 event participant, participants, and then online engagement as well. And then these are just some charts of location. And age of participants. So those are just things they were tracking to try and make sure you had a broad coverage of input from the community. And the draft vision was organized by the.
May interrupt for just a moment. Would you go back to that last slide? I'm really curious to see the age breakdown on who was participating from the community. Thank you.
So it looks like the largest group was 40 to 49, followed by 30 to 39. Well, let's see. There's a 60 to 69. I'm not quite sure. Yes, it's 68. So it's 40 to 49, 60 to 69 is 24%. Then 50 to 59. And 30, 39.
And is that?
That was a comment that there wasn't a lot of youth engagement.
Although 10% under 20 is actually, that's.
Under 20 is 10%.
Yeah, I think that's pretty good, quite honestly.
Well, I think that that's reading that 70 and older was 10%.
Oh, is.
Oh, you're right.
Oh, that could be. I thought it looked dark blue, but you're thinking it's black and you might be right by looking at the other pie chart.
Zero percent is under 20. And then you go to the right.
Yeah, you can't quite see that. The shade of blue for under 20.
Disappointing then, yep. Okay.
Yeah, so and that's not unusual. And it's, it's, you know, who has the time to participate and how are they, how are they being engaged? So that, you know, the basis was first come up with the vision. What is, where does community see itself in 20 years? And that was organized around the 2018 Strategic Plan that was adopted by City Council. So the, the overall vision, the city of Sandpoint is distinguished by its lakeside beauty, small-town feel, and welcoming people. It is a charming and livable small town committed to having a responsible government, resilient economy, sustainable environment, and vibrant culture. So those are the five pillars that were overarching for the vision. And again, back in April of 2020, the anticipated next steps were additional revisions to the existing conditions report, which is basically a snapshot of demographics, economic conditions of the community, additional public outreach, then drafting of the plan, having a hearing on the plan, and ultimately adoption. So then the process was paused in the fall of '22 due to loss of staff. COVID played into it as well as just increased development review workload. Because suddenly we were, there was a big influx of requests for development reviews. So moving forward, other documents that, that were taught, were incorporated into the draft and will be in the draft because some of these were finalized after the pause is the Parks and Recreation Master Plan of 2020, the multimodal transportation plan that was adopted in 2021, and the Arts, Culture, and Historic Preservation Plan, also 2021. We just want to make sure that the goals and objectives of those documents are incorporated into the Comprehensive Plan. And then in addition, partly due to the accelerated development pressures, the community has seen some additional studies have been undertaken and are currently in progress. One of those is a land use and land use supply and demand analysis, really focused on housing and industrial land and the balance of how much land, of what type do we need in the community? And, and then council and staff are going through updating that strategic plan as well. And then we're also doing utility rate studies. So those are all very data-heavy reports or studies that will be able to be incorporated now into the Comprehensive Plan so that our vision is very much based in real-world scenarios. Because even when you look back at the, at some of the documents that were produced, like the existing conditions, I think it says median house value was $285,000. Well, we know that has changed. That kind of very, I mean, and that's very important to, to get the most current data we can into this plan. So this is kind of a draft. Because as soon as I put it down, you're going to hold me to it. But we're going to try and stick to this timeline. So again, the, the top section are efforts that are currently underway that are going to be incorporated. But so some of those, we really need that data to finish out the plan. So particularly the housing growth and economic data that, that study should be done May-June timeframe. So it's then incorporating that data into, it's really going to be important in the Housing and Growth chapters. But so these are going, those going underway. So to kickstart this process, and we also are re-engaging the consultants that were helping us. So we are waiting for a proposal for them to, you know, re-energize the effort, do some more engagement, make sure where we are, you know, what has been done to date is still valid. And, and then just keep moving it forward. So tonight's really, what's the plan? Where are we today? And where are we going to try and get to by February, I hope? And then also tonight, and also next month, talk a little bit about the vision documents that were created just to, to verify and just revisit those. And then integrate the chapters, integrate the master plans that have been done, whether it's Parks and Rec, Arts and Culture into the chapters of the plan. Then go through the Character and Design chapters. Then get into the Housing and Growth because by that point, late summer, we should have the updated data so that those chapters can be finalized. Then we get into what Commissioner Ahmat is very interested in, which is the Land Use and ACI.
Only part of it.
That's part of it. But that, we got to get through everything else too. And so, and then it's the drafting of the documents for a period. And then ultimate goal, early 2023, we finally have the new Comprehensive Plan adopted.
Sounds great. Sounds great.
We can try.
What does ACI stand for?
Area, area of city impact. So the Comprehensive Plan has, looks at the city and then also the area that we could potentially serve outside of the city limit currently. So I just wanted to briefly go through what some of the final vision themes were in the plan. And I think some of these may have even been tweaked further by the Steering Committee. I was trying to make sure I had the most current version. But I will be sending you some of this. Some of the files are very, very large. But I'll be sending you some of this as background reading as well. So again, the, the themes that were really organized around the Strategic Plan. Number one was responsive government. And the vision is government strives for effective citizen engagement, reliable infrastructure, efficient services, resource stewardship, and high citizen satisfaction. Excuse me. And the objectives are to form strong relationships within the community and with regional partners to facilitate a culture of open and effective communication, keep pace with growth, and ensure long-term sustainability of infrastructure and service investments, ensure safety and health with the highest quality public safety and emergency services, and increase efficiency and city management and capital budget expenditures. Resilient economy, a diverse mix of businesses and nonprofit organizations benefit from the quality education, versatile workforce, fair taxes. Jumps, minds. Sensible regulation and reliable connections to the region and the world. Foster a dynamic and resilient year-round economy that provides high-quality, high-paying jobs and supports entrepreneurs and local businesses with commitment to place. Reinforce workforce training, advance educational opportunities to match residents with employer needs. Embrace innovation, technological advances, and robust internet to support the next generation of job industries, education, and workspace, and facilitates affordable, quality, and diverse housing options for Sandpoint's workforce across all income levels. Sustainable development. Development is planned on principles to assure good stewardship of resources and responsible outcomes relative to the built and natural environment. Protect Sandpoint's natural beauty, open space, and scenic views through thoughtful development patterns. Prioritize growth close to daily needs and existing services and manage future city expansion to preserve natural features and ensure services are not overburdened. Promote a mix of land use and high-quality development that fosters successful, enduring, and desirable neighborhoods. Balance recreational access to the surrounding lake forests and other natural features with environmental protection and stewardship. Safeguard our clean water, air quality, dark skies, and sustainably manage our resources. Vibrant culture. The Sandpoint community is inspired to create experience and support our history, social events, lifelong learning, recreational pursuits, and art of all kinds. Aspire to be one of the nation's best small art towns by celebrating the creativity, innovation, and diversity of local arts, culture, and events. Honor the strong sense of pride in the city's history with robust standards for design, preservation, and development. Promote and enhance downtown and surrounding neighborhoods as a cornerstone of Sandpoint's historic charm and small-town feel. Advocate for the health and wellness of all residents and the ability to pursue active and healthy lifestyles. Cherish our access to high-quality and diverse parks, natural amenities, and outdoor recreation opportunities. Integrate an authentic spirit of inclusion and adaptability to accommodate needs of residents of all ages and abilities in community gathering spaces, events, and programming. Livable community. Development encourages connections among people through a diverse mix of housing, walkable, and bikeable neighborhoods that are safe and secure, ready, and ready access to recreational facilities and public spaces, and robust street and digital infrastructure. Proactively address the housing needs for Sandpoint's full-time residents and workforce. Design neighborhoods with a sense of community and identity, respecting the scaling character of established neighborhoods. Foster walkability and a comfortable, safe, aesthetically engaging pedestrian experience for all ages. Enhance community connectivity, livability, and health, economic vitality, and access to commerce, services, and businesses through strategic mix of land use and multimodal transportation investments. And I'm not quite sure what happened at the top, but then champion bikeability as a cornerstone to a healthy and equitable community as both a recreational pursuit and a viable means of transportation in all seasons. So those are the five pillars around which the vision moving forward is.
And we said that these were developed in 2019?
20, late 2019, early 2020.
Okay.
Until the spring of 2020. So that is all I have for you tonight. I just wanted to let you know it is underway. It really is. And we, as I said, we just spoke with the consultants. They are excited to get started again, but we're still waiting for a proposal for them. So if their timing doesn't work, we'll just plug along until they are ready to jump in. But as we move forward, we'll try to squeeze in discussions of the comp plan at every meeting. I do know that you have upcoming three or four subdivisions to conditional use permits. You have a lot coming forward. Just going to let you know. So. With that.
Is there any need to meet more often than what we do?
We may try to schedule a special meeting time just to discuss the comp plan if needed.
I think if your agendas end up filled up with public hearings, there'll be special meetings for the comp plan.
I think it'd be good to knock this out since there's so much change happening right now. I mean, right now seems like it's ideal since we're seeing like the, maybe the peak of what the demand could be. Hopefully the peak.
I know at each of these steps, there's the opportunity for public input. But is, is the portion of the plan being written now, is that based on past public input? And I guess my question would be, when is the next phase where we expect to see solicitation of robust public input?
Probably one, once we get the consultant on board. But I think what they'll do is kind of do like a kickoff and really try to bring everyone up to speed where we have been to date. You know, it's, it's interesting to me. When I was looking at the comp plan, when I was looking to come to interview here for the position, and you know, a lot of this information was on the website. And they, for all the engagement, they did what are called word clouds, which are, you know, when they ask you questions and people put their answers and then they, by the number of times an answer comes up, it, the, the letter gets bigger. So that's a word cloud. And where I came from, I had just finished my Comprehensive Plan. And it was so fascinating to me how those word clouds were just, you know, lake, open space, you know. But it, but they're a very good way to visualize what the community values because that, it just jumps off the, the page what people are saying. So we will have engagement throughout. Yes.
Ms. Twetton, what type of coordination is taking place with the other entities, considering that we have essentially three neighboring municipalities, and then we have the, the county so that we're avoiding inefficiencies, inefficiencies, and then looking forward for the next so many years, especially considering that Idaho right now is the fastest-growing state for five years in a row.
Um, I don't believe we've had any, just because the county is updating their Comprehensive Plan. I have not had a chance to talk to them about that yet. So as of right now, I've not been coordinating and finding with them yet. But I think Jennifer has enough.
I can probably help you a little bit, Amy. So the, the county and the cities have had a regular meeting. We haven't, we haven't. It's been put off due to vacations over the last couple of months. But other than that, it's been consistently a regular meeting monthly for about the last 12 to 18 months. And it is discussing issues about growth impacts, utilities, expansion of utilities, coordination of utilities, as well as negotiation of areas of city impact. So in order to, in order to get into the discussion about the area and what we want to see in our area of city impact, we will have to enter into an MOU with Bonner County for that negotiation. Our intention is to bring that MOU forward to the City Council, probably at one of the meetings in May. And that kind of kicks off the process. And you can see it then reflected here with, hopefully getting to the point where we have a completed negotiation and a redefined area of city impact by November of this year. So, so we have the continuity with the players participating in the discussions. And again, as we look at city of Sandpoint's area of city impact, we brush right up to city of Dover, Dover's area of city impact. So it's really going to have to be a conversation, not just with the negotiating entities, city of Sandpoint and Bonner County, but really a discussion of collaboration and cooperation amongst the cities. And much of what drives that discussion frankly is utilities. So what many people don't realize is that when we're talking about general city of Sandpoint business, when we're talking about city of Sandpoint's comp plan, we're talking about development and growth and impacts within our city. But we also have two utilities at the city. We have our sewer utility and our water utility. On our water side in particular, we serve the city of Sandpoint, the city of Ponderay, the city of Cootney, and some areas of unincorporated Bonner County. And in addition to that, we are the wholesale water behind Seringa Water District, which is serving in Dover's area of city impact and Dover's city limits. So it starts to get real complicated on the utility front. And that's much of what, moving forward in discussions, we're going to have to untangle the who's serving what, who's growing next to whom, and how we coordinate between our different entities on utilities.
Thank you.
Do we, do we know when the last time Sagal and Ponderay have completed their comprehensive use plans?
And I just looked at Ponderay's and it was quite old. I want to say their plan was 2007, 2008?
I think I've heard that they are starting something now.
What is the nature, quite honestly, of how Sagal is currently incorporated, if you will? Is it, is it a city? Is it, I mean, is it a city?
No.
What is it?
I don't know what Sagal is.
I'm curious.
There's different areas of zoning. There are some that are, but they don't have, they don't have services. There's a limiting factor.
But is there, is there a mayor of Sagal?
No.
I didn't think so. Yeah, so I was curious what they're.
But we have a, we have a Selkirk fire.
Which is a regional thing now, right? They're kind of all blended.
Unincorporated community.
Okay, thank you.
Just ask Google.
Mr. Chair, one thing I would note related to Sagal as well is, and relative to coordination is, in addition to utilities planning, we also do transportation planning across entities. We are in the process right now of updating our urban area transportation plan. And Sandpoint is the recipient of a grant for that effort and coordinating that effort with a consultant that also involves Dover, Ponderay, Cootney. And interestingly enough, and probably to the point of your question, it also is involving the county at the table because an urban area, it's defined by the census. And when we cross the bridge and get into Sagal, significant portions of Sagal are actually considered urban by census data. So.
I have a general question here too. I know when we looked at some of the pillars of what we're looking at, the resilient community, and I think my initial question, some of that got answered when we were looking, what kind of resilience are they talking about? It appeared that the emphasis was on economic, although natural resources, which may be also a part of that. I know I've had some conversations with people in the community. And I don't know if it's not, it doesn't really seem to me to be planning a zoning. It's almost more of a coding thing. But people have concern about canopy cover. If we currently, I know there's coding for, for a tree in your property and that sort of thing. At what point, if at any point, would be appropriate to look at a more robust definition of canopy cover? And I'm, I'm just saying it. That's not really planning or zoning. It's more coding, is it not? Yeah. Thank you.
And we're also updating our. And we're also updating our urban forestry plan.
Okay.
We have a tree committee and we have code that relates to urban forestry management. And we are in the process of doing a review and a full master plan update, actually it'll be our first comprehensive master plan really related to. The urban forest, we've got code around it, we have some policy around that as well, but this will be really looking at. Our action steps, how we interact with private property owners and really considering. Our forest canopy, both the urban canopy, but all the way up into the watershed, because I think to your point. About a sustainable community, it relates to water quality. Down in the lake for our drinking water and so with the urban forest plan, we're looking at. Both up in the watershed as well as into the city and combining that forest master plan that we had with the urban forest master plan.
Is there any need or? Would it make any difference to, for the city limits to grow? To solve some of these potential issues that? We might have?
That should be determined.
So I think, I remember back. We did talk about some area that was to the west of the city limits. That was in the area of city impact that was not another city. But. I can't remember where that ended up going. And if we, if the city does grow, then we have to offer services to those areas. But I think some of those areas we already are, or it's close enough that it wouldn't make much difference. But I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm just curious about. How, how the city would grow if, and if it would even, if it would be good or bad, or if it would create more problems.
I think it gets back to Jennifer's point of the drive, drivers very much the utilities.
Yeah, so I'm thinking. Baldi. Cause we, the city had property or still has property that is actually out of the city, I think. It's, it's, that's the line.
Sitting down and then I keep getting at. The Baldi property was annexed into city limits and. I think that what we will see this year is council ultimately determining. What to do with that property, particularly as we're doing rate studies right now. And we'll be coming to council with workshops, probably second meeting in May on rates for the utilities. So as a reminder about the Baldi property. It was purchased by the sewer utility fund for purposes of regionalizing a wastewater treatment plant. At that location, so. As we look at our, our different funds and our structure in the city, it's owned by our sewer ratepayers. It's not a property that, for example, we could decide to just keep as open space or a park. Without the general fund having to purchase that property from the ratepayers. And so it was decided about three years ago. That the wastewater treatment plant would remain at the location that it currently is at, would not be regionalized. At that Baldi property location for a couple of different reasons. Number one, we could still regionalize sewer utilities at the site that we're at. In fact, we've been in conversations with Cootney-Ponderay Sewer District about opportunities to connect in. As we look at building a new plant and they're looking at permit. Updates for their district as well and have some capacity issues. Secondly, it was really a financial decision that in order to. Treat up at the Baldi site and it would still require discharge down at the current site that we're at. It would cost about thirty million dollars in infrastructure to build the pump up to that regional facility to come back down to the site that we're at, so. With the price take with that. Infrastructure that would be required to go to that location, the decision was made by council and there was a steering committee involved. In the discussions as well to keep the plant at the location that it's at. With that said, then the property isn't needed for purposes of sewer treatment. And our sewer fund ratepayers can't continue to just hold on to a property for a use. That they don't need, so we'll be looking at what is the ultimate use. Of that property, is it disposition, is it sell it to the city's general fund, or what does that look like? That property was annexed into city limits, however, at that location. There are no utilities serving the property there and it is kind of the gateway to the area of city impact as you're referencing. So what it would require to serve that property or any other properties. In our ACI to the west would be bringing water and sewer under the tracks. Current estimate for that effort is about two million dollars, so I think. As you see us move forward in conjunction with the comp plan update. The research that is currently underway regarding the land use, population growth, economic impacts. You will see the discussions really start to take place related to the area of city impact and that may include. Looking at subarea planning for there and looking at what it would take to really serve. And potentially even grow into that area and how we would fund the cost of the utilities for doing so.
Before you sit down, just in case you have.
I'm, I'm just standing, I'm just standing for a moment.
Kind of similar vein to Mo's earlier question and. If an area in the county is identified as it should be part of our area of city impact. Does the people living in that jurisdiction have to agree to that, or is that a decision we can make because they are in need of our utility services?
So that is a, a good question, Mr. Chair, that is a decision that is made through the negotiations between the city and the county. Relative to what is the area of the area of city impact. If you look at the areas of city impact for. Sandpoint in particular, Ponderay to a good extent. As well as to some extent, Cootney, we have very large, wide ranging areas of city impact. What the county has been asking of the three jurisdictions. Is for, or the four cities is to look at our area of city impact and really look at bringing that area in. And where realistically we can grow. And we could potentially serve and it's looking at not only what you could serve, what really makes sense and we would want to come potentially at some point into city boundaries. But it's also an area where development is occurring and it's impacting. City services and, and all of our offerings within city limits. But if you look at the area of city impact for City of Sandpoint, we go over like two mountain ranges, so. I suspect as we move forward with discussions. It probably will be looking at bringing the area of city impact in dramatically. We're also doing work administratively right now, looking at mapping out realistically. What is an area that we could even serve with utilities? The area of city impact as it stands right now for Sandpoint, there is no way in the next hundred years. We could serve as far out as our area of city impact is.
And also for clarification, Mr. Chair, the parcels or properties that are identified in the area of city impact by agreement between the cities and the county don't. Necessarily need to already be receiving services, so you will have parcels in the area of city impact that are not receiving services. The, the measure by which Sandpoint serves outside of its borders is really unique across the state. We don't have a lot of cities, one that are full service and two that have the capacity and ability to serve beyond borders as much as Sandpoint does.
Thank you.
I have a general question in relation to. The comprehensive plan and it is relates to Traverse Park and I understand that there's been a large donation that's been made for development of facility there. Are we going to be involved in that? At all, or how, how is that being managed?
No, that, that was a project identified in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. That was updated in twenty twenty and then the donors came forward, they saw this was a potential project and they funded it, so that. Is not something the planning commission would necessarily be involved in.
Who's managing it on the city side?
Parks Planning Director.
That's out right now, we have an RFP out for design build contract, so I believe we close next week on that.
Is there potential for recommendations for zone changes in certain neighborhoods? Or certain areas of the city?
That would, that would happen as part of, you know, we'd adopt the plan and then. As part of the land use, we would say this area, we may want to change the land uses and then after the plan's adopted, we would change the. Zoning districts to reflect what the plan says.
Which will also be driven by the adoption of the future land use.
So with the, with the strong demand for housing. And I feel like sometimes he's, this planning that happens. Is, is kind of a reactionary to. You know, the current climates of, you know, housing or, you know, financial, you know, economic factors. And sometimes, like I think the last comp plan was probably right at the perfect time of. A big economic impact over the whole country. And so do some of those ideas that got put in the plan maybe were. Short sighted as far as the current conditions when. The plan is supposed to be five to ten or more years out. So I guess what I'm, what I'm asking is, how do we ensure that we're not? Just planning for like this massive amount of, you know, demand that we have right now? And then in a few years, it's not that way. And we've spent a bunch of money and a bunch of effort for something that may or may not happen.
Well, again, what you're, you're looking at is land use, so. You have all these goals and objectives related to transportation or development or housing. What comes out of all of that is where do you want what uses, you know, your land use map divides up the community of what uses, but that's not. It may be reactive in some ways, but you're trying to look forward, but it is always hard because it's, there's some unpredictability of what the future is going to hold. But all you could do is use the. The best data you have available to you to, to try to come up with a sound plan.
And I think it's important to remember, there's a variety of different avenues for input into the final product. And it's all, the majority of it's data-driven decision-making, so you're, you have census data that you are required to rely on. And then you have public engagement and then we have land use studies and actual data to rely on to make, develop the best plan that you can, but that's just. The, the community response is just one element of analysis.
I think that's what's different with this update and the approach we're taking versus. The approach that was taken with the update day undertaken in two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty, so. That was an update to the existing comp plan. And looking at census data, which was old at the time. As well as getting community input and feedback. What element has been added to the update, particularly because of all the changes that we've seen in the last couple of years was. Bringing the consultants on to do that land use analysis, that economic. Population trends and growth and really go in and do a deep dive data analysis. So it can inform decisions and we don't get caught up in. The priorities and the issues that we're dealing with currently, that those are balanced across all the different types of land use, so for example. Planning and zoning commission and up through council saw a request. Middle of the year last year for a rezone from industrial land over to residential land. And, and ultimately that made it up through council who decided at that time against it. Wanting data to inform really what's needed for residential land and balancing that with what's needed for industrial land, so it's really about balancing those different land uses. And having the data informed. So that we're ensuring that, that, that balance happens in these discussions rather than the current pressing issue. Which obviously is lack of housing, affordability of housing right now. But there also is a need for business growth in the community for the long-term viability of the community as well.
So who has a definition of affordable housing? Nobody.
There is a technical.
Yeah.
It's no more than thirty percent of a person's income.
So what? What is that? What is that?
Thirty percent of that?
No, but what is that housing?
What is that, pardon?
What, what zoning or what, what? What do, what part would we have in? Defining how that actually hits the community?
We have no statutory authority in the state of Idaho for government to fix the affordable.
Okay, so that's what I'm getting at.
Is there, is there, is it within Idaho code that cities can enter partnerships with private entities? As I've seen in other communities suffering this kind of growth like Aspen, that, that, you know, the town and the private developers. Get together, share the costs to keep pricing down?
That is a very technical. Option that requires many more steps to be taken than what the City of Sandpoint currently has in place. But I can tell you step one of that is this land use study that we're doing, that's being done right now. So the land use study is the data that you need to drive what you have available and the affordability of what's available. That's the data that's going to help inform whether or not there are opportunities for Sandpoint as a city to develop. Any programs to help with the affordability issue. But by Idaho constitution and Idaho code, we do not have statutory authority as a governmental entity to fix.
Right.
The affordable housing issue.
Yeah.
And we also have to remember that places like Aspen and Ketchum and Blaine County and Sun Valley. Have what are called affordable housing trust funds that are funded by private donors. So that's very different than what any, any option that we have here. So I hope that answered your question.
What I can say on a more global level is the mayor has had a, Mayor Ronstadt has had a workforce housing task force, which. And there was discussion on what is it that we're talking about and I don't know that that has gotten down clearly to a very specific definition, but. In those discussions, the definition is different than typically how HUD is, is defining affordable housing. So oftentimes what you find with those HUD programs and the HUD housing in particular is when we're talking about. Families who are working in our service industry and, and some of those industries in our community, they don't qualify for the affordable housing, so it's that filling in that gap. Between the affordable housing and median housing prices, so. We did issue an RFP for a group to come in, in conjunction with the comp plan. And in conjunction with this land use population study, which also was to inform. This other effort, which was a, which was a strategic plan around workforce housing. We have gotten a proposal from a group who is doing work currently down in Ketchum. And also another community in the state. And so we're in discussions with that group right now on what it is that they proposed. To ensure that the product of what we are anticipating to get out of it was an actionable. Workforce strat, housing strategic plan as opposed to a high level. Here's kind of different options of what you can do, the workforce housing task force has already kind of gotten to that point and identified. Public-private partnerships, they've identified opportunities with short-term rental housing, they've identified opportunities with code changes. So a number of kind of the low hanging fruit and buckets of options are out there, but in terms of actionable. That would be the intent with this and also ensuring that we retain the participation of the. We retain the participation of the surrounding jurisdictions in this effort because the answer to. The workforce housing issue doesn't lie simply within the city limits of Sandpoint.
Go ahead.
Back to the comp plan, if I may. Chapters one through 13, are they going to be delivered as a single tranche? Like all at once for us to review and then submit? Or is it going to be one through 12 and then we'll look at the implementation chapter? At the end?
I think we'll, we'll go, we'll do chunks.
Oh, thank God.
And we, we won't just. Put it on your table as one, because obviously we want input as we're going along.
Thank you.
Okay. Along those same lines, as far as meeting the Idaho code, you know, our responsibility, I mean, the city's responsibility enough, this commission's responsibility. I, I, for somewhere, I'm thinking it was in code that every 10 years we were supposed to update this plan. I mean, that's. And, and that just, if we update a chapter or two, as we've already done. Does that meet that code? If, if, I mean, that's considered an update, even if the entirety of it is not updated?
It's considered an update and we're going to get some grace and exceptions because of the COVID impact also. That we've had over the last two to two and a half years. But yeah, it's considered updated at the point any chapter is adopted. So like, if you remember, we had the airport chapter.
Correct.
Even separate from everything else, it's adopted.
Other questions from anybody? Other comments from?
Good discussion.
City staff? Okay. Thank you all very much. With no further business before the commission. This meeting is now adjourned. Not at 11:22. At 6:21. PM. Thank you.